Okay, welcome everyone. I'll call the meeting to order for Reno County's Commission Meeting for September 13th. At this, this time, we will do our normal pledge of allegiance and then a prayer today since it looks like our pastor didn't show. Commissioner Hurst has offered to say the prayer this morning, so if you could stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you humbly and acknowledge the fact that you are the wisdom that we rely on to do our jobs. We thank you for this opportunity and we ask that you remain with us when we make decisions and, and we just are reminded of your greatness and what all you've given us. We would ask also that you remember us when it comes time for some moisture. We know you're, you're on your schedule, but we just ask that you remember our needs. Even though we may not all speak of them, they're on our minds. Let us make our decisions today based upon your will and not upon our own personal opinions. And we just ask that you be with all of our employees of the county and look after them so they are safe today and in the week to come. We ask all of this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst, for pinshitting this morning. Again, want to welcome everybody to our meeting this morning. Just one really important announcement. Somehow, the county commission was roped into a being part of a goat milking contest at three o'clock, three, three o'clock on Friday at the fairgrounds. So if you want some entertainment, please join us for that. With that, we do have one public hearing at the top of the agenda here related to a vacation of a portion of West 95th Avenue. Just to check, is there anyone here for, for that hearing this morning? All officially opened the hearing. Is there any discussion on this? Staff want to have a briefing on it at all?
The vacation of this road came at the request, a petition of the owner who owns both sides of the road. It's butts up against the new K-96, K-14 highway that was just recently opened. There's already crops on the both sides, so if it's not vacated technically, you'd have to, I guess, divide his, the landowner's crops, but at the road viewing, we had Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Hurst, Don and myself. And then Cindy was there to take notes and there was no one there that had any problems with it. It all made sense.
Any questions? Is there, do you require approval?
There's a resolution in the consent agenda, but not during the public hearing.
Okay. Any Commissioner comments?
Pretty obvious to those of us that attended. Pretty obvious to those of us that attended the hearing that this is a proper thing to do.
Thank you to Commissioner Harrison Parks for doing that. Unless there's further comment, I'll, I'll close the hearing and we'll see it again here on the consent agenda. Okay. For items not on the agenda, I think we have one person here for a comment on our budget decisions for 2024. That's a little further down on the agenda. Got a few things ahead of that. I offered to let him speak now if he wanted to, if the commission's okay with, with taking that comment now. But you're, you're welcome. Say your name and address for the record, please.
My name's London Robb. I, I live in Hut, or west of Hutch, Pleasant View area. And I understand that you want to raise the mill levy on the, for the fire departments, which fire departments could always use money. But I thought that's part of the, well, I should say first, I left the house, I told my wife that I'm going to town. I didn't tell her where I was going because she gets frustrated when I, when I do because she says, they're going to do what they want anyway, so what's the point? I said, well, that's true. I'm not going to argue against that. I don't know how to answer, respond to that besides, I gotta, I guess, get it off my chest, but she said, well, then you're doing it for you and not for what needs to be done, but here, that's not here nor there, but I thought raising property tax raises revenue, so why do we have to raise the mill levy? Money is tight the way it is and we scramble around trying to figure out how to survive. And I think everyone's in the same boat on that issue. I guess to me, I look back on, I mean, I'm quite acquainted with the fire department, maybe not like I should be, but I, to some extent. I don't know, I'm not putting any agency down, I'm not putting any person down, I'm just saying this is strictly my perspective. But I remember back in the mid 90s, Bill Guy was the only one on emergency management. And after a number of years, he wanted an assistant. He was granted an assistant. Bill Guy retired and I've had several conversations with him, but he wanted an assistant and he, then after he retired, they were looking for a new, one to take his position. The assistant was interviewed twice and in my opinion, he was more qualified than you can, than anybody else could be because he was very familiar with departments, very familiar with how fire works and knew the people, knew everyone and could actually help people out. But he was, he interviewed twice and both times he was denied by Gary Meeger. But now emergency management has four, four positions. Where's that money coming from? I mean, I, I suppose they got their own budget, it doesn't really come out of fire. Eight years ago, I know that the word comes around that we're trying to consolidate the county fire departments. Consolidation in the business world almost, almost always hurts the consumer. Maybe not immediately, but down the road, it always hurts consumer and I think the fire departments are the same way. Consolidation is going to hurt the community. Initially, it sounds good and all, but in the long run, you lose accountability. There's reckless spending, just the way it is because nobody holds the person that's ultimately responsible accountable because they can't. They don't know the person. Eight years ago, I'm going to say eight, seven, eight years ago, we had Pleasant View wanted to redraw the boundaries and extend it out a little bit further because of the station there. They hired a lawyer, they went to the, they went to the state statute, they had to have 10% of the landowners' signatures in order to push this through. And they had to have 19% to override it. Well, they had, they moved the commission meeting out to Pleasant View area so that people could have public comment and that kind of thing, it made it easier for the public. They had over 200 people at that meeting. And yet it was denied. You know what percent of the landowners signed that? 97% of the landowners signed that, that thing to change the, and it wasn't, they weren't pitting one department against the other, it had nothing to do with this. It was strictly because of response time. But it was still denied. 97%. The reason they didn't have 100% is because 3% were landowners from out of state that they couldn't contact to get it sign, that's what I was told. But yet it was denied. Why was it denied? My opinion, I, I blame a lot of it on Gary Meeger and, and Joe Sullivan, but I, I, that's just my opinion. I can't prove it. I don't know how much emergency management was behind it. I, I don't know that. I can speculate, but I, I can't prove it or anything, so I just, I know that Joe Sullivan wanted, and Gary Meeger was constantly wanting to consolidate the, the county to improve response time. Well, why didn't they, why didn't they change that? That was eight years ago. Now, they want to consolidate because of better response time. That's kind of disingenuous to me. An example of no accountability. I understand that the county got a UTV to help with fire suppression. Who pays for that? There's 20,000 that, I don't even know what department it comes out of or does the county, I don't know how that, I, I haven't seen the budget for the last couple of years. But the fire, fire chiefs were always told to, to watch your budget and, you know, cut back because we got it, we got to get our budget under control while we expand the county budget, I guess. But they got a UTV and I assume they got a trailer for it to haul it because you can't run a UTV down the road for any distance. And in my opinion, the fire needs a UTV as bad as I need a four-wheel-drive tractor to plow my garden because it's about as effective. Is it handy? Absolutely, it's handy. I, I have nothing against a UTV. I'd love to have one. It would save a lot of steps for me, but is it practical? No. Oh, wait, no, they didn't get one. They got, I think they got three. But now they want to raise the mill levy to cover all this and I, I'm just, I have a hard time understanding that. The rationale for it, it sounds good and all. People feel okay about it, I guess. And I, you know, the way it's going, at some point, we're going to have to get paid departments out in the county for how many calls. And I know another issue that is big on everyone's mind is the whole bunker gear. Back in the 80s, fire department personnel paid for their own bunker gear. Which is ironic and I'm not advocating that at all, but my argument is, is if people pay for their stuff, their view of purchasing it is a whole lot different. But now, gear is what, over $2,000? And they have to replace it every 10 years because of the whole cancer scare thing. And I, I can't refute that, but I would, I would bet you to guess that the research that they're going by the manufacturers of the gear are lobbying researchers for this research so that they can sell more gear. And I would also make the case that, you know, the county runs, each department runs probably what, 120 calls a year, which what, just a fraction of that is structure fires is what, where this cancer stuff is coming from or the theory behind it. You take the city that runs what, 35,000, 3,500 calls a year and have a lot more structure fires. Why are we under the same, why is the county under the same criteria for bunker gear replacements as what the city is? City is 10 years, or I assume it is, and the county's 10 years and look at the the difference in fire calls, that doesn't make any sense to me. And as far as truck replacements, I got 60-year-old tractors that are more dependable than tractors in the last 10 years and I like them a whole lot better. New, new stuff is always nice and convenient, but hey, it is what it is. I, I, this is where we're at. I'm not sure where, you know, I think we're often better let, just letting things like they are for something that, yeah, it's nice that, that they run and everything, but they're dependable. How, when do they need to be replaced? When the cost of, when the cost of keeping them up is less than, or is more than what the value of the equipment is. If you'd have seen some of the equipment that they started with and the community came together and bought it. We used to have fundraisers for the fire departments. Joe Sullivan did away with that because, and I, I know I'm bashing him and he's gone, I understand that, but it's that mindset that is carried on, in my opinion, or it seems that way anyway. I just, I used to think I'd enjoy getting in politics, but I feel like there's so much deception in politics, they're not being truthful up front consistently across the board that I just, I don't know that I could handle it, but that's just me.
Well, Mr. Robb, appreciate your comments this morning. I, I think you made a, a number of different comments on different things. The fire district studying and, and consolidation will be on further agendas. You're welcome to come for that. Which district are you in?
Eight.
Eight. Do we know what, because I was trying to look and see.
Right now, the current mill levy for district A is 5.441 mill. And the proposed budget is 6.215.
Okay. Okay. So it is increasing a little bit. And, and it's based on equipment costs. So Commissioner Bogner had a question or comment?
Comment. You're talking about the equipment cost. It was my understanding and maybe I misread a lot of it and or didn't ask the right questions or didn't. There's been a new uniform radio program for all EMS, fire across the state. And we're caught with paying for that this year. We don't always get to, to make assessments on everything locally. Sometimes mandates are pushed down on us and it's not, do we want it or do we not? It's, we've got to figure out a way to fund it. And it was my understanding along with the equipment, a lot of that equipment was this radio equipment that needs to be put in all these vehicles for uniformity when there's a big disaster and that stuff, I recently got off the ambulance board four years back and that was all in the works. And all this radio equipment put all these types of entities in a corner to have to come up with the funding for that and come up with it right now. Because there's a date when it's got to be in place. So am I wrong in that? A lot of this is the new radio.
Equipment and then a lot of the budgets also set aside money to transfer to their reserve funds so that when they need equipment, each district, they have the cash. So there's a buildup of reserves for the equipment, whether it's radio equipment, a new fire station or trucks.
Well, and I, I wanted to be mindful of Mr. Robb's time this morning. We will have a further discussion on this later in the agenda. You're welcome to stay. We'll take your, your comments for the record on that for sure and, and consider those. But we will have an open hearing here in 30 minutes or so, so you're welcome to stay or, or go either way, but we do appreciate your comments. Thank you. Does the commission have any items for revision or addition to the agenda? Item seven is the consent agenda. Is the motion approved as a consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as provided by staff.
Commissioner Hurst moves through second. Second by Commissioner Parks. Discussion? None?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Bogner?
I saw on our paperwork that there was one dissenting comment on this vacation, on this, on 7B on the Prairie Dune, or Rolling Dunes Road. I'm assuming staff studied that and, and decided that it didn't matter. I mean, or it didn't actually, that was a bad choice of words. It always matters what people's opinion is, but does it, is it a valid concern, is how I should put it.
Yeah, Don Britton, Director of Reno County Public Works. The person that maybe questioned having that road vacated, which there's never been a road there, it attaches, he could possibly open a public road to get to the latter part, back part of his property, but it doesn't land lock his property. He has a public road where he can access all of his property. And then when we had this at the last planning zoning meeting, he didn't appear or talk about it, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and so also I would think I'd note that road has been mapped for decades, but never built on. If, if that were, the way we do the process now, we would not allow a road to just be planted like that and not built in that length of time. So really, there's a few of these out on the maps in the county that were ideas of roads that never actually got built and when we come across them, we, staff really, unless there's a very valid reason, we try and vacate them because otherwise they're kind of, they, they tie up future development and cause confusion, in my opinion. Is that fair, Don?
Anything else? Any, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitel?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Brezen?
Yes, motion passed 5-0. Item 8A is District Attorney Annual Commission Update. DA Stanton's here.
Good morning. I've submitted to the commission a fairly lengthy annual commission update. I'm not going to go through all of that. I'll give a couple of the highlights, where we are right now. One of our biggest concerns is the hiring of staff. We have hired our support staff. We are now full. We're still seeking an applicant for the open attorney position. We did have two applicants. One of them, I offered the position to and that person turned it down, saying that they didn't want to continue with just prosecution. They, they were in a private office and they had made a decision not to, not to go forward. And the second person didn't work out for various reasons. One of which was he wanted me to change a policy in order to hire him and, and that's not something I, I do. If I've already implemented a policy that I've asked everyone else to follow, I, I'm not going to change it for one person. Again, he was not probably a good fit for the office. So we're still looking and we're still waiting. I may try to do some recruiting later this, later this fall. Looking at some various options. The other thing that is really on top of my list is the First Time Felony Drug Diversion Program, which I hope to have in place by January 1. I'm working with Community Corrections on that. This is a great program. It's a statutory program. Unfortunately, as we've talked about even here today, statutes sometimes allow things, but do not fund them. And so I have submitted some legislation to our legislative body and to the leaders of the House and the Senate that would do two things. The first would allow a successful diversion to be included in the, in the Community Corrections Funding Formula. I don't know if you're, if you're aware, but the funding formula for Community Corrections is based on successful supervisions. All of these cases that we're talking about would otherwise, if they were convicted, otherwise be supervised by Community Corrections. And so what this effectively does is take these cases out of out of that funding formula. And I, I think it might hurt Community Corrections across state. There may be some Community Corrections offices that are, that are reticent to, to enter into these types of agreements for that reason. So the first thing the, the proposed legislation will do is to allow those diversions, successful diversions to be included in the funding formula. The other, the second thing it does is to allow DOC funds to be used for these diversions. Because it, it doesn't make any sense to say, well, you would otherwise be supervising these, these people, but we're not going to allow any, any use of DOC funds. So it doesn't mean that I can't go forward even if that doesn't pass. The, the makeup of the, or the agreement that we're going to sign for this diversion program would require the participants to have a initial diversion fee, which would go to my office like all other diversions, but there's an additional $500 fee that would go straight into the, into the general fund and be earmarked for use by Community Corrections to supervise these individuals. I asked Mr. Rigir to give me an idea what it, what it would cost to supervise these, these people. He came up with a figure that is approximately $986 per, per person, based on a 50-person caseload. That included things like their, cost for internet and rent, so, so that may, it may be, I mean, I understand his reasons for doing it, but it's, it's not, it's, those aren't costs directly related to this program. So what I've tried to do is figure out a way to, to help supplement that. And so I filed a, or I'm in the process of filing an, an application. I think you heard a couple of weeks ago from the Health Department about the opioid litigation funds that are going to be available to the county. And I have filed for a $25,000 grant. That would actually, without my, my legislation passing, that would fund, that would fund this program. And it's an ongoing funding source, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something that goes to the county anytime soon. So that's what we're doing on, on, on that. I'd take any questions you have on that diversion program. And then just a couple of other things. We will be doing our 23rd Annual Toys for Tots Drive beginning in, or in December. We've done that every year I've been here and it's, it's beginning in, in December. We've done that every year I've been here. And it's, it's something that happens throughout the county. Other departments have boxes for us, and we go around and pick those up. I know that Public Works has boxes. I'd have to ask if he's got one out there now. But Public Works and others do collect toys for that drive. So it's kind of, it's become kind of a countywide effort. And we've, I think last year, we filled 18 of those boxes with toys. Don't have the figures in front of me, but it did really well. So other than that, I have information for you in the report, on the staff, on the caseload, information on drug court. I guess the only other thing I would mention to you today is that we will be moving two of our staff down to the first floor, where Shonda and Leslie have been. As soon as they move out, so that they can work up in the offices that they're currently, that those two employees currently occupy. That's my diversion, that's my diversion staff. So they'll be down on the first floor. As soon as Leslie moves out, we'll put them down there. And they'll be there for the remainder of the time until the construction on the fifth floor is complete. All right? Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Questions for the District Attorney. Commissioner Hirsch?
I have just a comment or two. Really appreciate what you're doing with regarding this First Time Offender type program. My question is, and it's, it's not a question as much as, as the thought of years ago Douglas County had a program that if you were a nonviolent offender, in other words, didn't pose a risk to the general public's safety, that, and if you had a job, you could have an ankle bracelet and not be subjected to the county jail. I was wondering if that's, because of the total cost of running jails and so forth, if this is an option that could be considered for the county. Can we look into that? Because I know there's at least, one local company had a contract with Douglas at one time on this program that they had. And to keep someone away from their job, if they got a job, they continue to own a job, family, I just, it just seems to me that maybe if it's a cost-efficient and, and useful program that might one consider. And I know there's lots of, not only your office, but lots of people involved have to make that decision. But is that something that we could look at?
We're actually already looking at that. We had a meeting about three weeks ago that included Defense Council, Prosecution, the Courts, Community Corrections, Court Services, all the, all the parties that are relevant to that issue. And what we're trying to do is come up with a, what we call a risk assessment tool. And that risk assessment tool would be used as people come into the jail. They would fill out, they would answer these questions, and we would, and they would be assigned a risk assessment score. That would be available to the court upon their first appearance. And a court then could make a decision, not just from a kind of a bare record and, and arguments of counsel, but also this risk assessment. And I'm, I'm committed to following that, as long as the citizens of Reno County remain safe. So I certainly see value in it for nonviolent offenders. I have real questions about it when it comes to domestic violence, or any kind of sexual assaults, or, or other violent acts. I would assume that the, the risk assessment tool, when we're done, will take all of that into consideration when, in that score, and give that, give the court an idea. So we are working on that. We've been, we've been talking about how we get the population of the jail down pretty extensively. And I think that we're moving towards that. It's just like any other process. It's, it, we're asking as people who already are burdened with their full-time jobs to take on another task and figure this out. But I think that it's worth it for the county. I think it's worth it for, for my office. It's certainly worth, worth it for defendants. And I think within, I, I don't want to give you a precise timing, but I hope by the end of the year, we have that risk assessment tool in place. We have some, we have some, some samples out of other jurisdictions. I don't know if we've got one out of Douglas, but I know we got one out of Celine County, that are already using these type of assessments. And there's no reason for us not to be doing the same thing. So I think we're already, already working on that, Commissioner.
And I didn't mean to sound just money, money.
No, it's not just.
It's family, family also.
It is. And, and, you know, especially, you said, for, for low-risk offenders, there's no need to just house them in the jail until, until trial, because trial takes a while. So I, I'm all for giving people an opportunity to get out of jail and go on with their lives as they, as their cases are pending.
Commissioner Whitel?
I wanted to say, I appreciate you guys working on that, because I think it's really something we need to do. And I appreciate you guys taking the lead to, to figure something out on that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's basically what I was going to say. Thank you. But I stopped and talked to Celine County at the fair yesterday for a little bit, and they had just built a new jail. It's getting ready to be opened up. It's interesting with their population up there, that their jail has got 100 fewer beds than our jail has. And so you speaking to them already having this program may be the reason for that. And so I think it, it'll be a real good deal if we can get it done.
When I worked up there, they were building the jail that they're now leaving. So I, you know, I, they've built two jails in the last 25 years.
Yeah. So do they have two jails then? Or just, they're vacating the one to the news?
I'm, I'm assuming they're just moving to the, to the new one.
That's the way he indicated. But it had 150 beds, and what is ours?
Seven.
Over 200. And so, yeah, that would be a great shot in the arm if you guys can get this done. I do appreciate your work on it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I appreciate the time and the effort on, on this report and all that you're doing. I do feel like, you know, we, we've had some discussions here specifically to budget. That's kind of our, our focus as a commission. And, and I feel like we've been heard by you and, and both, and the sheriff on just the significant costs and burden to the taxpayer with, with the jail operations. And so I would also want to thank you for your effort on this. I know we were at a stepping up council last week or the week before. And I'd encourage, if any of the commissioners want to go to that, I'm currently assigned to that, but it can always trade if you want to go to that. It's every quarter, I believe. And it's a wide-ranging group of stakeholders that are working on this issue, among other issues, I know. And just, you know, trying to ensure that, you know, we're helping people that, you know, need help in whatever way that is. And it's not always jail time. And so thank you again for that.
Yeah, we have a, we have a, if I might follow up with that, one of the things that causes those types of issues is when a defendant is found incompetent. I checked yesterday, and the wait time now in Larned for somebody to get in for competency, for competency restoration is 14 to 20 months. And so what we do is we have, in many, in many cases, we're housing them in, in the jail until they can go. I know Horizons has trained at least two people to do that competency restoration. And as soon as they get their policies and procedures in place, I think we'll be referring our competency restoration locally, which will, which will greatly reduce the time and cost to the county for doing that. So I think that that's another aspect of, of what we're trying to do from a mental health standpoint, to move these cases along and get people out. So that's really good news to me. Because if you can send somebody right here locally, or have them come into the jail for that competency restoration, then we can move those cases a lot faster. We don't have to wait those months and months and months.
Yeah. And that's good, I think, for everyone. It's, it's, it's kind of sad to hear, you know, people that are incarcerated longer than maybe the jail sentence would be, just because they're, they're waiting to get through the process. So.
There have been a couple of those, for the most part, not. But it's still, it's a, it's a, it's a cost to the county. And I don't, I'm really interested in, in doing something from a mental health standpoint. I would like to, at some point, incorporate mental health diversion into what I'm doing for First Time Felony Drug Offense. The problem with that is, at this point, we don't have any ability to, to team up with Community Corrections. And I have asked our legislators to look into that. We had a meeting with them, and I asked our legislators to do the same thing for mental health that they did for First Time Felony Drug Offenders. And so that way, we'll be able to, to team up with Community Corrections and get people supervised, find a plan for them, get them out of the jail, and get, find a, find a plan that will work for them. And so that, those are some of the things that we're, that we're working on.
Well, I can't speak for the whole commission, but I think we would be interested in supporting, even if there's budget requests related to alternative processes like this, especially if we can see, you know, an impact to overall jail census numbers. And, I mean, that would be a great way to show a cost benefit.
Well, as soon as I get the, this first part of the diversion program underway, I will, I will undertake some investigation and some effort to try to do that.
Appreciate that. Last thing I would say, I think, I think I could speak for all of us. We would be happy to support, if it's via a letter, or even driving up to Topeka to testify, if your bills do get some floor time with the legislature this, this winter. I know I'd be happy to go say a few words, and we'd be happy to write a letter.
I will, I will keep that in mind, because I, I, I think that my bills will at least become legislation, whether or not they get passed or not.
Yeah.
Is another, is another question. I don't know that the DOC will be happy about my, my inclusion of their funds in diversion programs, but it makes, it makes a lot of sense, because if we don't have the diversion program, Community Corrections is going to supervise these people anyway.
Yeah.
So it, it's not really, it's not really a cost issue with them, or shouldn't be. And we should be able to get, to get these programs moving. When the state creates these types of programs, and they're given an opportunity to show funding, or to establish funding for those programs, it seems to me that that's the next logical step.
Yeah. Well, and it makes sense to better align incentives. I mean, we don't necessarily want to incentivize agencies to want people in jail, if, if there are other avenues. So I appreciate that. Commissioner Bogner had a follow-up comment?
Well, and I'll speak to some of this stuff later, but being she brought it up here, there's talk of a new state mental hospital that crossed the county line here in Wichita. And we attended a meeting, Randy Partington and I, Quad County Meeting the other day, and the people from Cedric County said that they are getting closer just to, to building and getting something going there, so the state has more capacity to handle these problems, which they haven't had in the past. But when I signaled I wanted to speak during your further comment, you're going to get it handled locally here, the way you were talking about Darnside faster than that's going to come about. It's just the way it is. And even if it does come about, if you've got that in place here, right here in Reno County, like you said, will, will facilitate things happening a lot faster and a lot more economically for this county. It'll be a, it'll be a godsend for some other counties, and, and we'll probably end up using both. But, you know, if that's at your discretion and your, but I just thought I'd throw that comment in there, that that is moving forward and getting close to something happening, according to that meeting, Monday morning, Monday noon. And so, you know, just so you're apprised of what's going on.
I was aware that that was happening. I've just, I questioned whether with the, with the issues that they have in Cedric County, how, how many outside counties are going to be able to take advantage of that, of that facility? I hope that we can. Certainly, it, it should take some of the pressure off of Larned. You know, the decision years and years ago to, to close all of the hospitals was a really, really bad decision from a local standpoint. Probably made sense financially for the, for the state, but from a local standpoint, it really, it really has thrown a kink in our, in our proceedings. So hopefully, we'll continue to find new and novel ways of dealing with this problem. There are a lot of people that are working on that.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Mr. Stanton, for your report, as always. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item A B is Planning Department Regulation Process. I asked Randy to, to give the commission a briefing. I know we have three new commissioners that might not be fully up to speed on, on planning regulation processes and planning and zoning dockets. The, the one thing that kind of always, like, was a surprise to me when I came here was many of the processes that planning and zoning works through are what they call quasi-judicial. And Patrick will explain that to you. But it's a little different. And I wanted, you know, as, you know, we have solar regulations starting to heat up. And, and I'm sure, I, I've gotten some comments directly, and I'm sure you have too. And I just wanted to make sure the commission's handling the process right, so we don't unintentionally affect the process. And, and if you would, Patrick, just explain that, and explain how this process is different than kind of our normal legislative work.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman. Planning and zoning procedure is, now, just saying it, this is a fairly dry topic, that generally your constituents will not ask you, you know, on the street to explain to them in detail. However, when controversial or interesting things are happening that affect people's lives, they get very focused on the issue themselves. And it's really important for the outcomes to follow the proper procedure, because we have state law and court cases that say, if you don't follow all these procedures and do the, do the right, not just do the right thing, but do it in the right way, we can be subject to court challenge. So I'm, I'm excited to walk you through the process. And it's fairly, it's, it's a little bit more technical than some of the stuff we do, but, you know, I think it's going to be important. And I just kind of prepared some notes on how things go, kind of, you know, Schoolhouse Rock, A to B, how we get this done. Feel free to jump in and ask questions. But basically, the Planning and Zoning Body, which is also a commission, and I'll try and make sure I'm clear that I'm talking about Planning and Zoning versus County Commission, what I'm talking about. Planning and zoning is appointed by you guys. So when there's openings on that board, you guys are the body that appoints them. They're all volunteer, and they're generally comprised of people who have knowledge and expertise about develop, real estate skills, building skills, those kinds of things. It's kind of the kinds of people we look for, because they understand some of the issues involved. Whenever there's a, the idea to change something, to add or subtract, or modify something in the county zoning code, that's the body that does the work to do it. Ideas for those changes are sometimes come from staff who see issues continuing to crop up. Sometimes the public talks to a commissioner, and the commissioners direct the Planning and Zoning Committee to work on it. Or sometimes the Planning Commission themselves just sees a need to work on something. But they are kind of the arms and legs for the county. Remove from you guys to actually dig into the codes, revise them, work them over, talk about it, do all that process. So they are free to do their own research. They work closely with county staff. There are times when they're taking a while to do something, that they get letters and emails from members of the public kind of early in the process. When those come, they're all shared with, all the body, all the commission, all the Planning and Zoning members get copies of those from staff, so they have them. I've instructed staff to kind of keep a record of those things, because I think when a person from the public sends a letter, even if it's very early, they intend for that to be somehow kind of permanently in the record. But basically, however long it takes for the Planning and Zoning Board to work on the regulation, they work it over till they feel like it's the way that they feel confident with it. Close, close to what they want, based on their research. At the next step, they send it to the county counselor, where I just look at it, see if there's any unintended laws being broken, make sure it's objectively clear, do my best to add anything I think is. to add anything I think is relevant, I guess. Then it would go back to them. At that point, they would schedule a public hearing on the regulations. So that's the official public hearing. That's the chance for members of the public to come and having read the proposed, you know, we have an actual document. So sometimes, one reason we don't get the public, we don't, one disadvantage of the public's too early is they're looking at a draft that the committee hasn't worked up themselves and those problems that maybe in an early draft might get resolved, you know, before public comment. But the public hearing meeting, that's where everyone, pros or con, you know, people who like the regulation, people who don't like it, come and be heard. And sometimes it it and that will take as long as it takes. Talking to county staff about it, you know, in the past, they've had meetings that go late into the evening and then they'll actually recess it and say, we're going to continue this at a different time. So, I mean, the county's position is everybody will get a chance to be heard at the public comment meeting. So obviously, at this point, was with solar, we're not, I haven't seen anything official yet, I haven't seen a proposed draft yet, so we're not, we are early in the process. I know there's concern from the public that they are going to want to attend those public hearings and they're going to be able to and and be heard. The one key thing about the public hearing, when the public hearing ends and everyone's said their piece, that is what we call closing the official record. So, you know, quasi judicial, similar to, you know, a court case has a beginning and an end and you can't just show up the day after the trial with new evidence unless it's accepted in very strange circumstances, right? If it, that's the end of the record, it has to stop. So it's kind of we're saying, we've got a, we've given everyone a chance, we've had notice, people knew this was coming, we've tried to alert people to it, and now we have to cut it off. We have to cut the evidence off at this point. And then the staff compile the record, they kind of summarize everything and make a documentation of what all it is. Why that's important is, I'll get to later, when it comes before you guys, that's important. But anyway, so we get to that point. Then the commission, the public, the planning and zoning commission, having done their public hearing, heard everything from everyone who wanted to say anything, reviewed all the evidence from staff, they can either vote to potentially make more revisions, work it, continue working on it, or if they feel like what they have is what they think the county should adopt, they can vote to make a recommendation to the county commission to adopt the change. Okay? So what gets presented to you guys is officially a recommendation from planning and zoning to adopt something. When you guys get it, let me make sure I didn't skip anything in my outline. Yes. So so that at that point, it comes onto your guys' agenda, generally at just a regular meeting like this one, you know, it'll be on here. Now, I talked about closing the record. One thing that drives county counselors, you know, kind of is always a problem for us is there's an urge frequently for members of the public who have who have strong feelings about the regulation to try and come to that commission meeting and add new evidence or relitigate the case essentially, right? And because we've had this opportunity for public hearing to be heard, we really, that is not, that is not appropriate at the county commission level because we're interjecting new, we've already created the record, the record's shut. The only instance it could theoretically be allowed is if something that was a fact that did not exist or was not discovered at the public hearing came to light, which very rarely happens, but has happened other places. But if it's the same information you would have given or did give the the planning commission, you are not supposed to come here again and do it. It muddies the record. Now, there's a strong and there's a strong urge, we always like public comment at our meetings, so it feels wrong to tell people not to talk. It really just, it feels, you know, it's the opposite of what we usually want. But because of this record and because of the court cases involving preserving this record, that's that's what we have. So the planning, so you guys now, in this scenario, the planning and zoning has given you guys a proposal that they recommend, you have, three things can happen. If at least if a simple majority of three of you vote to adopt the recommendation, then it becomes part of the county zoning code. Done. Also, sorry. You could also have a motion to return the recommended regulations back to planning commission for more consideration. In other words, we're not saying yes, but we're not saying completely no, but we want you to consider something. For efficiency, this usually ideally is accompanied with a specific request of what to work on, you know? So you're saying, hey, we see, we appreciate your work, but we think you haven't fully considered X, Y, Z, or this section, we don't really like the way you've worded it, could you please look at this again? And if that happens, it kind of goes back through the, it kind of kicks the process over again, but that gives a chance for things that the commission sees differently than planning zoning to get ironed out before so we so we can fix them. And then the third thing that sometimes happens is the commissioners can change the regulations, but you'd have to have, but it requires a super majority vote, in our case of four commissioners, and they would all four have to agree to the change. So theoretically, that could be a total rewrite of something, but that would require all four of you to kind of work it over together in one meeting, which I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but it's fairly cumbersome. What I see being a more workable scenario would be four commissioners wanted to remove one single provision from the document. So I, you know, I vote, so there's a motion to strike section A or something, so one portion of it. And then if four commissioners support that, it could be adopted with that change. Or it could be, there's a set, there's a 10-foot reference and you want to change it to 20 or five or something. But while it's technically, I mean, it's possible to do a whole lot of revisions, obviously that's, you'd have to commit to being here for a while and working it over and it, it's not county councilor's preferred method of work because the whole, it just is a little bit less clean, but that is an option. It does sometimes happen. And that's pretty much, you know, then at that point, either we've sent it back for more work, we've adopted it by three people voting for it, or we've adopted it with the change that four commissioners support and we're done. I did want to add one key thing that's different. This, this is talking about a regulation. And we have a little bit, we have more latitude and, oh, yeah, two more things. If you want, if you do vote against something or you have an issue with something, we refer to the Golden Rules, which is something I sent you guys a copy of, which is a court case called Golden, that just happens to work out really well because Golden Rules makes sense, but it's actually somebody's last name was Golden. And those are court-approved reasons to vote for or against a zoning issue. So there's a court case that said, and the idea being, we want zoning to be uniformly regulated throughout the county and not to just be based on public opinion, popularity, or some specific issue too much. We want it to be kind of a, it's supposed to be more of a scientific, objective process. Once regulations are, the the second thing, when you're doing a regulation, you're looking at something that affects the whole county and you don't know at that time, at least you, you might guess, but you don't know specifically who, what company, what person, who it's going to affect. We're talking about rules that apply to everybody in the county equally, right? And once we set them in place, they have to continue to apply everyone equally. When a permit is is applied for, it goes through a similar process, planning and zoning reviews it, has a public hearing on it, and then recommends the commission approve it or not approve it. So it goes, it looks similar. However, what the commissioners need to look at for a permit is, does this permit meet our current regulations? Not, do I like this plan? You know, not, not, because sometimes the commissioners looking at us, when you look at a specific, do I like this thing going at this place at this time? You might not like it, but, or you might not like the, you might not like the entire zoning scheme. You might say, I don't think we should do anything like this. But at that point, you really, as a commissioner, have a responsibility to say, I don't like the code, I don't like the fact that the code allows this. However, as I read the code, this permit qualifies and I'm, so I am voting for the permit because it does meet the objective criteria, even though if I were rewriting the code, I would do it differently. So that that's kind of a hard, that's kind of a strange concept, but that does frequently happen where when we get down to actual permits for for specific things, it might look a little different than it did when we were at the regulations and we're at at the thousand foot view, but we have to kind of follow the same rules and and follow them out.
So maybe a couple points of clarification or questions just to help, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the commission. You know, you distinguish the difference between creating new regulation and and permits that flow through that regulation. Is the kind of containment of the record, those obligations, the same?
Yes, they are. And so, again, the permit process would have the same thing where we're the same process where planning and zoning would create the record.
Okay.
And they do that for, and then if you have a issue, you cite it, you say, based on the, I I don't think this permit should be approved based on the golden factors and the record as I read it, but not new information that wasn't presented.
And, you know, one of the things I think we're already seeing is commissioners is, you know, direct lobbying, pro and con on on the issue. And, you know, my understanding has been, you know, it's, it's not really appropriate for commissioners to kind of take that and not add, not suggest like, hey, you need to put this on the record through staff, through public, you know, hearings, because they may give me information, like, can I, let me ask it this way, can I use information somebody's given me individually in my decision making in in this particular?
It, it would be problematic legally to cite things that weren't in the public in that final record. So we really want everyone, I mean, I I understand, you know, commissioners, you guys are leaders in the community, you're going to get lobbied on this, but we really need everything, the the process is designed so that the planning and zoning commission does the real work, does the real drafting, and so they need the actual information, the concerns of people, the issues people see, that needs to go to them so they can consider it when they're drafting. Because also, remember, I would tell someone from the public, hey, I will only be looking at a recommend, I I have a much more limited ability to make changes to the document. So it's in, if you have a strong feeling on this one way or the other, it's in your best interest to go to planning and zoning where they have a lot of latitude to re to write the whole thing. That's, that's where the work's being done, that's who needs to hear your concern.
Put a different way, you know, there, there's, there's an avenue for appeal on all zoning work, essentially, it's in statute, versus our normal decisions. I mean, we don't necessarily have to justify them.
Right.
It's, it's probably appropriate that we do, but, you know, in previous cases that we've worked through while I've been on here, staff and and you spend a lot of time creating what ultimately is our opinion in writing, because that is what could be argued and appealed. And and it's just, that's totally different than like, hey, you know, I'm going to vote no on the, you know, buying a new tractor. Like, you don't really have like an appeal process to appeal it.
So, yes. So when you guys are making what, most of your decisions are what they call legislative authority, where you are acting as legislators and you can use whatever information you you think is appropriate for it. When we have, I guess, the the thing to keep in mind was, once we pass zoning regulations, it creates members of the public, then you can rely on those or do and do rely on those as written in making their decisions, right? So if I have a piece of land that's zoned a certain way and the process is just is set out a certain way, then for a commercial building, and I apply for a permit for a commercial building and it meets objective criteria for that, then I I need not just, I need, I need a better reason for you to tell me no. You need to ground it in in the golden factors in law because I kind of had an expectation based on, based on the rules, that I would be able to do this thing. And so that's why you guys are really what they call judicial authority when you're reviewing these zoning and permitting, because you're bound by, by people's reliance and expectations of the public based on existing rules, you're kind of bound to follow them because that's, that's what people are looking at and basing their decisions on.
Well, the last thing I would say, and I think we've talked about it, and and I'll open it up and see what the other commissioners think, but, you know, having a small blurb or even, you know, a, a small referral document that says, you know, when somebody says, hey, you shouldn't do this for solar or whatever, and they come directly to me and say, thank you for providing that comment, you know, please read this, you need to reach out to staff, put it on the record, go to the hearing. Like, I think sometimes, you know, we get emails and and we're going to forget that, like, you know, I thought they gave me that comment and I can use it, and they never show up and put it on the record. And then a debate ensues later on, I'm like, hey, I relied on that really important comment and it never got on the record. So something where we can provide our constituents with, like, reinforcing, you got to put it on the record if you're going to talk to me about this, because I got to use the record.
Yeah. I could help if somebody wanted a relatively generic email response, or even, I wrote a cue card one time for a commissioner on an issue of what, you know, he had, he wanted me to advise him how to respond and then he had to write it down.
Did you hold it up so he could read it?
He asked me to, that was only because he asked me to do it, but yeah, I had it. But anyway, yeah, I mean, because really, the process is really designed, and I understand, I know people from the public are just concerned about issues and they have strong opinions and they aren't, you know, it's not, they, they're not versed in county government works and they're frustrated when they find out that talking to a, you know, that they talked to the wrong person. So the goal is to get them to talk to the right people so that that all goes well and the right people are planning and zoning.
Okay. Commissioner comments? Sean Hirst, or, did you have something? I saw you reaching.
You mentioned that if we had something as a commissioner, we'd go to the planning and zoning. But yet, on the same hand, Sean Q. Public, we cannot voice opinion or are supposed to have an open, open conversation with planning and zoning. Used to be that in, just up until a win situation, that people, general public, had a time that they could go speak to the planning and zoning, okay? Well, somehow that was denied that process from then on. And I, I, I really feel that face-to-face communication is good. I think that's planning and zoning should, people should be able to go to talk to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning should be able to set, okay, I'm going to give you, the general public, 15 minutes to make public comments on things that we may not understand or we we want to hear what you have to say about it. And then limit the individual to so many minutes. But that gives the public an opportunity to convey their thoughts on a project. And it's open communication, face-to-face, that that then everybody's assured that all of the planning and commission members in in attendance that they have heard. And there takes a gray area out of it, in my opinion. Now, I'm not forecasting that you do two or three hours worth, you know, I think it can be limited, but I I just feel that that open communication is, is, is vital to civil discourse and democracy, I guess.
I think what, I think the reason why planning and zoning has, is working on the regs without speaking for them directly, but I guess I kind of will, without a lot of public input at this time, is because it's, it's relatively, it's, you could, people feel so strong about this issue, you could just do a town hall hours and hours every day. And until they've actually drafted something and are close to figuring out what they, what they think is where it's going to land, it's, it's premature to just hear all those comments, I think. So I, I get that there is a balance, obviously, and there, there will be public hearings and everybody will get the chance to weigh in on them, you know, certainly. And I, but it's trying to balance, you know, the, the planning and zoning commission are all volunteer, they spend a tremendous, even without a controversial issue, just going through the permits, they spend a tremendous amount of time. If you go to their meetings, they really read everything, consider everything, take, you know, I, I've always impressed with their diligence and really reviewing all the issues so that when you guys get, when it goes with the commission, it's been well thought of. And and it's, it's not a labor that, you know, they, they don't usually walk in parades as the planning and zoning department with people very happy with, you know, it's kind of an unsung hero. So I guess we're trying to balance their time and clouding things up and letting them to get some work done before they get all the public comments. them to get some work done before they get all the public comment, so that they have kind of a, some of the issues that the public might have, might get addressed before they get there, if they get their work done, I guess.
And, you know, maybe, Don, if you want to clarify anything, but just to kind of run this point to ground, I think Commissioner Hurst, what you're saying is, you know, there are not always opportunities for the public to comment at every meeting. Patrick, what you're saying is, there will be, and there's a required public comment, period, at some point. And so, Don, and Patrick, just to be clear, I mean, the commission has fairly broad authority to decide when they take comment and when they don't, absent the required process, which will obviously take comment, right? Like, they don't have to take comment every meeting for everything.
The planning, the planning doesn't have to take comment every time for every meeting.
Okay. So, I don't know, Don, if you want to clarify, like, what?
Well, all the public has the opportunity now to be heard by the planning and zoning through emails or writing any of their concerns. And then, so, all of that gets sent to the planning and zoning as soon as, before the next meeting, so that they can look it over, see if they want to make any changes to the regulations based on what the publics have commented. And as far as, then the public verbally will be able to speak when we open the public hearing. This, we had a special planning and zoning meeting that wasn't the normal date, just here a while back, because the planning and zoning, we took the regulations and had County Councilor Patrick look at them, so we thought they was pretty well done. And so, then, then we was going to go back and probably, they would set a hearing date. But there was a lot of information came in from the public, and so, we had another planning and zoning meeting, and they wanted some more changes done. So, that's why there wasn't a public hearing date set this last meeting. Now, Mark and I went through there, made those corrections that the planning and zoning wanted to be made, and now they're going to be sent out to them, and also sent out to the public. And then this next meeting, if we go there, and the planning and zoning commission is satisfied with everything, then a public hearing will be set. And so, the next meeting, then, all the public, for how long does it take, will be listened to, and then to see if the county committee, or the planning and zoning commission want to make any changes after hearing their verbal input.
Okay.
So, the hearing is just about to be set, we're close, but public comments makes a difference. When they, when the planning and zoning commission want to change things based on that, then they get changed, and then we wait till the next meeting until there's no more changes, and then the public can see it as it is, and then have something to support or not support. There, it's not in the middle of anything, they're seeing the final thing at that point, and that may change because of their comments.
Okay. Commissioner Parks?
You kind of answered what I had, I was with Ron on that, I was kind of surprised he didn't have any chance for public comment, but it was almost contradictory sounding when you say that they're going to take public comment at the hearing, but then that closes, we're left with limited options to change that if they don't, but they can go from that hearing back to change the regulations, is what I understand.
It does, yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, I wanted to make sure that that happened, because there has been a lot of voices out there, want to have their voice heard instead of an email. And there's still a certain sect, I think we've got to get into the mindset out there that does not communicate email, text, or otherwise, that want to talk face-to-face, like Commissioner Hurst was talking about. And so, there has to be a time for that, but you kind of clarified that, that they would go back and work on that.
Yes, when the regulation draft, the planning and zoning commission feel like it's done, as far as they know, with what information they have then, then there's a public hearing for them to hear more information that may be different. Then it goes back to planning and zoning to alter it if they choose, because of what they've just heard from the public.
And, Don, can the public meet with staff to provide their comments directly?
Well, if you have it written, then you have a record.
Right.
Staff is not, doesn't want to convey what anybody said, and then take it out of context of what they mean. That's why it's great if it's written or an email, then it's them.
Okay. Commissioner Weitzel?
Now, they can call and ask questions about where we are in the process, whatever, but they really need to write down their comments, and then, when they do that, those get emailed to all the planning and zoning members, we don't verbally tell them that, we want it exactly what the public are saying.
Okay. Mr. Weitzel?
Yeah, and, I mean, I've contacted staff a number of times about no public comment at these meetings, and, you know, I think there's a difference commenting when the regulations are being decided versus when planning and zoning thinks they've got all of the work done, and then they hear a comment, and they're like, oh, well, we need to change something we did. Because if you can comment early in the process, there's a chance, more likely a chance, in my opinion, that the regulations will be drafted that way, which, I mean, in my opinion, I think we need to have public comments at all of these meetings, we used to do it, and we don't anymore, and I think that's the concern that's being relayed to me, is, you know, well, we can comment after they've made up their mind, and maybe we can change their mind, but, you know, if you can comment, you know, like, if my 16-year-old, you know, comes up to me and lobbies me for new sneakers before I've set the budget, then he's more likely to get them than after I set the budget, and then I've got to find room for it. I mean, so, you know, I mean, it's just, I think, early in the process, and being able to comment at the meetings the way they can comment here would be better, in my opinion.
Well, in most planning cases, when there's a case, then the people, they have an opportunity to comment before any decisions are made. But this is different when we're creating regulations, and we're trying to have something orderly, and they have an opportunity to write in their comments, and they will be verbal, but, you know, I understand what you're saying, but in such thing as wind and solar, I don't think we'd ever get anything accomplished, I think it'd be comments all the time. I don't think it'd be orderly enough to get in order where the public would see what they have to comment about. While you're building them, you know, we're changing, they're changing their minds all the time. So, it's just, I don't know, it's the process that, you know, when they first started making wind regulations, it kind of got out of control, there was a lot of comments, and there wasn't no, a draft made by staff so that the planning and zoning commission could have something to work off of, and it just, there for a year, nothing got accomplished. And then we, and then staff come in, and we made a draft for something for them to work off of, and then with all the public comments and stuff, and then was to be able to create them. So, we're just trying to get it done orderly, and to where it makes sense, and the public has something that they can look at, that's not half-done.
Did you have something, or Commissioner Bogner?
Yeah, I mean, it's good to know that, know the legalities, that's what always ends up getting us in trouble. We're learning, the public on not only this issue, but a lot of issues, is learning that there is a process. When I've been getting comments, I tell them, there is a process, the process has to be followed. But I do think, from what I've been seeing, when these comments are sent to you, or sent to staff, they are sent on, and that clears us legally, as was brought up earlier, as long as everybody gets it, and it's made public, you get it along with us, and I think staff's been passing those along, because we can't control what the people send to If they would, if everybody would just realize there is a system, and there's laws in place, and we all have to follow them, to stay out of trouble, legally and otherwise. With that in mind, I feel, like I said, I feel our people are passing things through, and making sure that, adhering to the process, and we need to make darn sure, and I comment a lot of times, you need to make that comment through the proper process. So, I'm sure things will happen that are beyond our control, but I think everybody's trying to do the right thing, and not only on this project, there's a lot of other projects in play, that the people think these five individuals have a lot more authority over a lot of things that they don't. And the people need to realize that sometimes we may be in agreement with you, but we can't legally do certain things, and we're not the one and only here. So, please, make your comments public and to the right authority, and we'll all get along a lot better.
Okay, so I see all three of you with your hands on your mic, I think-
I thought this was jeopardy.
Commissioner Parks had hit the light first, and then we'll go this way.
In light of the fact that we originally put a moratorium on this, just to put a hold on it till we got a policy in place, and the discovery process, maybe walk, if you don't mind, for just a few minutes, walk through the discovery process and the beginning of the planning commission. They, there was talk of doing the research to put the policy together, how does that begin, so that the public maybe knows that? How does that begin, that research, and what do you use for those resources to develop solar? And I might back up a bit and say what input from the very beginning, if you can say, legally, that you used on basis of how we may or may not feel as a public, or as a board of commissioners, as to what we want the end result to be, without certain inputs? I don't know if I made that clear, but-
Maybe, kind of, I'll see. So, at the beginning, when staff created a draft set for the planning and zoning commission to work off of, so what we did was, we went out there on the internet, see all we can find out about solar, we went out to the other counties to see what they was doing on solars. So, we gathered all that information. Now, a lot of the draft that we first make up is a lot not to do with setbacks, not to do with any of that kind of stuff, so it's just a lot, just to get everything in order. And then we put in what is kind of the spoken out throughout the communities, throughout the other counties, throughout whatever we can find. And then, so that's the draft. So, then we send that, we take that to the planning and zoning commission, and then they have, they can go out and do all their internet search, they can, and of course, we've had all the other county stuff sent to us, they can do all that stuff, plus, we get all the public comments emailed or mailed to us. So, they use all of that information, so there's no limit to what somebody wants to do, it's just up to, how much do you want to look for? The public and the planning and zoning commissioners, they all have that, they can go as far as they want to go with it. But at this stage, where we're at now, a lot of decisions are made now, based on what we're going to hear, if we hear any more new information from the public.
Okay.
That's not, that's not already been looked at, or thought about.
Okay.
I hope that answered your question.
It did, I just thought maybe helpful to hear that.
Commissioner Hurst?
Been at this quite a while, Don.
Yeah.
To start with, there was probably maybe only one or two counties that had any kind of regulations that they were looking at. And until just recently, there's been some new ones come up, and it's hard to fathom, you know, you got to put all this together, and we've, I've been through with the wind, okay? And we've been, a lot of conversations regarding on the wind deal, because it was extremely tough to decide. I think as a whole, ended up in the best interest of the county. But it was a process, and I guess, I understand the process, I just am a little counter to the fact that I'd like to see a little more input from the public, limited by the planning and zoning. But the process does work, or can work, should work, providing that input is brought to everyone that is in a position to have an influence on the legislation when it's done. So, I'll just, like that, I just made my comments earlier, so.
Commissioner Weitzel?
So, just to clarify, the public's not allowed to comment at the commission meeting on?
On, when, the record will be closed, and, you know, candidly, you know, these kind of regulations can be ripe for litigation, there was litigation on the wind issue here. So, my whole goal, honestly, on this process, is to just keep us out of litigation. And for that reason only, we would ask to close the public comment and not have, because it's going to be most likely redundant from what was said at the public hearing at the planning and zoning, and that's really the reason.
I think-
Can I follow that?
Can we issue a press release, letting the public know that they, you know, ahead of time, that they won't have an option to comment at the commission meeting, and that they should make their comment, like, you know, because I think if the newspapers would pick that up, and we have it on the website and stuff, then, you know, then I think that would be okay, as long as people know ahead of time.
I think publicizing that public comments need to happen at the public hearing, and when there's a public hearing date at the planning and zoning level, we can do maybe a little extra publicity on that one, because honestly, you know, honestly, what we want, what I want from the legal process is, everybody who feels strongly about this to be, to have, to speak up at the public, planning and zoning, public hearing, so they get all of that information. And then when it comes to the county commission, though, you will have a recommendation to either vote to accept, tell the planning and zoning to send it back for more work on something, or if you, or option four of trying to modify it slightly by four votes.
Just to be clear, I think we're talking about two or three different things here. One of them is, you know, is the commission intending to take public comment itself after the record is closed? I think your recommendation is no. I know we've not always taken that recommendation for reasons, you know, at the time, but I think, providing like, the current intent, based on, you know, what we've heard here is to not.
My formal recommendation is to not take public comment, it will be up to the commission whether or not to follow that recommendation, but, you know.
So, there's, sorry, let me finish, there's that, there's also, you know, I think what Commissioner Hurst has brought up, and what I've heard a couple of times now, which is like, hey, should we, and should we ask, or I'm assuming we can instruct the planning commission, if we want to, to take public comment ahead of their finalizing the regulation, and I think that's been a question, and, you know, past history has said, well, we used to do that, we don't do it anymore. I think Don's given some reasons why that can be complicated, but that's the second point, is like, hey, should we take some initial comment publicly via a hearing, ahead of having the regs in draft form?
I mean, I could just, having not discussed that with planning and zoning, my initial thought is, they are a separate governing body that has control over their own meeting, and so, actually, no Kansas Open Meeting Act allows, every governing body can choose whether or not to take public comment. Meetings have to be held publicly, but it's up to the governing body at that meeting whether or not to allow comment, and for how long. So, I guess my initial analysis would be that planning and zoning has the authority to run their own meeting the way that they are choosing to do.
Now, you do understand, before the final draft that's sent for your vote, there is a public hearing.
Yep, no, and that was the third point, I just, I just, sometimes I like, I want to make sure we're all rowing in the same direction, and there's like, multiple public comment questions here, and there's like, will there be public comment? Yes, it'll be after your draft is done. Should there be public comment before the draft? Currently, the answer is no, based on what the planning commission wants. Is the county commission taking public comment? Currently, the answer from staff is recommending no, but we can do what we want at the time.
You're talking prior to the public hearing comment, Tom?
For us?
Yes, for us.
No, I think that would be way out of order, if we took comment before they were done. No, I think that would be way out of order if we took comment before they were done.
Just trying to get.
Yeah, I, I would think that would not be good.
I, I think, and I kind of began talking about this to, alluded to that it gets confusing for the public. I mean, it's confusing for us with all these things going on. My, my recommendation would not to have public comment at this level because I think you would be adding another level of this confusion to say, sometimes you can public, you can comment to the commission, but then later we can't. It's, it's, it is the three levels like you're saying, but you didn't say them correctly.
Well, and just, I, I think unless there's objection, I think there's consensus to instruct staff to put a, a very clear press release out there of, here's the steps and here's where the public, um, can physically be present to comment, here's where you can write your comments, and here's the deadline. If we can get all that out so it's clear, because obviously we've, we've been talking about it and it's a complicated thing that we're, we're trying to figure out ourselves, so.
It doesn't foreclose anybody from sending emails to anyone involved, whether it's commissioners individually, as a whole, or the planning commission. Doesn't foreclose anybody from sending that emails and, and phone calls.
It does, it does not foreclose them. There is a danger, or at least a risk, that if a commissioner's emailed, it may, that would not automatically put it in the record. If the planning commission gets an email, they are compiling those for the record.
Could those be forwarded in a sense?
I, I doesn't, I don't have a problem issue with them being forwarded.
And that's what I do. I mean, when I, when I get one, and I'm a little behind because on, on that group of emails, because I've gotten quite a few, but when I get them, I say, you know, appreciate it, um, this is quasi judicial, I'm going to copy staff. So they put it on the record and, and, and then, you know, reserve my decision until I see the full record.
It, it's one of those things where it's, is it, is it technically the right way to, for them to do that? No, they should be going to the planning and zoning. But I see it as public as wanting to be, they've written this email, they want this information to be heard, and their expectation is that it gets to the record. So we're trying to get it all there.
And you, anytime you get copied, it goes right in the record.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we prefer that when people want to email whatever, not to a single planning and zoning commission member. When you send it to staff, then it goes to all of them at the same time so that not one person's coming with some information to the meeting. And the other six don't know what's going on, you gotta discuss it. They all get it a week or so ahead of time, they can all digest it and start making up their mind on how they want to act on it.
So Don, if somebody does want to email the planning and zoning commission, do you have an email they can send it to that we can release publicly?
Yes, Mark, Mark's email or my email, and, and it's out there and we, we'll, I'll get with Sandra and we'll just make this crystal clear.
Sure, if somebody's watching now, can you, can you give one of those emails so they can, you know, shoot you an email right away?
You can get it on the website.
Right, I know, but I mean, like, since we're talking, we may as well just give it to them while they're, while they're listening.
Don dot Briton, B R I T T A I N, at Reno gov dot org.
Thank you, sir. And if, if the commission isn't planning on taking public comment, I, I think that should be part of that press release, so that way we make it clear that that's what's going to happen.
And if I remember right, Don, we also, when we were on the wind, uh, the commissioners all had available copies of all the information that was sent to the planning and zoning.
Sure.
So we could have that information.
Anybody can have it.
Yep.
Commissioner Boegner, I think.
Ask for it, you get it.
One comment, uh, as I said, I went to this quad county, they're all fighting the same thing at the same time. And, but what did come out of there is some of the information is changing daily on what our neighbors are doing, they're reopening their, their regulations, and they're changing their regulations, some of them weekly, or I, I guess some, some of them have already changed in last week, and there will be changes coming from what I understand in the near future. So when you said earlier that you went and you, you checked with what was happening with neighboring, uh, counties or what was out there in general for, from all over the state, it might pay you to revisit and check what's current versus what you had four, five, six months ago.
That's what we got months ago, just to create the, the starting draft. All these regulations from different counties, we have people emailing those to us all the time.
Good, good. So you know what you, I, I mean, I'm just saying the, the record is, is changing and, and what will affect your, 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 uh, uh, document is changing a whole lot right now because there's a lot of counties revisiting what they had a couple of months ago and making some big changes. And as long as you're working off of updated information, then, then it stands a better chance of, of going through and working out the first time or, or, you know, a lot less to go back and redo or.
We're working off of every email that we get. So if you're for or against it, you find new information, send it to us. And then that goes to planning and zoning commission members, and then they go off their decisions based on all that information.
Well, just.
But his, his, Mark needs to be aware of these things, and he needs to have the information of Mays and Sedgwick and, and other areas as they change. So it might be something he needs to keep updated on for his recommendation.
Okay, any final comments?
Thanks.
Patrick, had you finished up?
No, thank you. If commissioners have questions, you know, outside of a meeting, you can always ask me.
Don, thank you. Was that helpful for you guys? Yeah. Good.
Don, I'm surprised you gave your name, you should have given Mark's out, email out.
Well, I don't, I don't know it, I don't know how to spell it or what, I assume you can get it.
I think that's why nobody answered that.
Well, we might, we might ask the public if they do email Don to, uh, put solar regulations or something in the, um, in the heading, so that makes it easier for them.
Okay, item nine is a special district, um, 2024 budget. There's, there's four items on here, Randy, if you want to guide us through this.
Right, the first step is to open the hearing for the revenue neutral rate hearing, see if there's any public comments, have discussion about the R and R, close that hearing, and then after that, a resolution must be adopted that to exceed the R and R. It doesn't specifically want mill levies, it says in general, here are the districts that will go above R and R, and that's a roll call, roll call vote. After that, then you open the normal budget hearing to talk about anything, close that hearing, and then I'll give you the options that have been presented in the agenda package for what the various mill levy, homework budgets.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll open the hearing for the special districts. These are districts that are, are going to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Is that correct? Is there anyone here?
Yes, for, yeah.
Is there anyone here for that? Makes comment. Hearing done, we'll close the hearing on that. Now, would you like to proceed with, with?
The next thing is the resolution. So this resolution that shows the intent that to, or shows you are exceeding the revenue neutral rate for specific fire districts and then sewer district number eight.
Okay.
You pass this, doesn't mean that when we get to the budget, if you wanted to make changes, you still can, but this just protects.
What are?
The districts in general from the R, for the R and R purposes.
And what's the, um, if you can go down a little bit, um, are we going to do this by district or?
It's all one.
Okay.
So you would just.
Was, was there a question on, um, transitioning, um, utility districts out of mill levy? Is that coming?
That will be when I give you the different, uh, budgets in there.
Okay, so how is that? So I see one in here, the, the sewer district, but that's different?
These, these are the mills that would be, what they currently have a mill levy and what their R and R rate would be.
So, so this.
This is the new rate, this is the R and R that you would be exceeding, or could exceed.
Okay, just, um, I may be the only one lost here, but are we approving these mill levies? This is just announcing?
It's just a resolution that allows you that you are going to, or you could exceed the R and R.
Okay, so this is simply, um, a resolution announcing that we intend or have the possibility of exceeding revenue neutral. This does not make a determination on the mill levy.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, I was the only one that didn't know what that.
It's fine.
Yeah. So, uh, is there a motion to approve this resolution as presented by staff?
Move to approve, resolution number?
Twenty twenty three, twenty five.
Your mic. Twenty three, twenty five, by Hurst. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Boegner. Discussion.
I would say that I'd like to make it clear that this is for one small, not necessarily a small segment, but one segment of, of our, our overall budget. It's, it's individual districts. We are revenue neutral at the county level. This is a different taxing entity. The public needs to be aware that these are districts in their own communities that have decided that they need to do something different that we as a county as a whole are having to do, are, are, we are doing. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes?
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Boegner?
Yes.
Commissioner White soul?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes, motion passed five zero. Randy?
Now, is the budget hearing, you open the hearing for the budget again, have any discussion and then close the hearing?
Okay, and just, just so I'm clear, um, when we say discussion, we're, we're asking for public discussion. We close it, then we have our own discussion, right? Okay. So I'll open the hearing, is there anyone here for, um, discussion on this? Hearing done, I'll close the hearing.
Okay, for the budgets, there's a couple options in here. One is the budget as proposed when we set the maximum. The second one is budget as proposed but amended. The amendments, we went and looked at a couple of the utility districts and saw that with having increased the rates, sewer district two oh one, two oh two mainly, with their rate increases, there were, if there's a mill levy, there's less dependence on that mill levy now with the new rates. So that's what the budget as proposed but amended is, that still pretty much has, um, has what was proposed, but sewer district two oh two does, no longer has a mill levy, sewer district two oh one, their mill levy that was originally published goes down. And then there's still a tax levy for sewer district number eight, bonded interest, that's up to Highlands. Part of the issue with the Highlands is on the bonded interest. That bond was approved a few years ago. It stated that the bond was going to pay fifty percent user fees, fifty percent property tax. We've talked with bond counsel, that can be changed, I mean, the mill levy can be removed. But if that is done, sewer district number eight, their regular budget, their user fees will have to go up at some point. They'll be okay for maybe a year or two because of the cash reserves, but after that, there, we'll have to increase their sewer, their rates. And I don't know what that increase is, such as paying fifty, fifty, I doubt it would be doubled the price, but it will be at a pretty many price.
Questions? Commissioner Boegner? I mean, I, so maybe I'll start since there's nobody talking yet. I'm really a fan of, um, moving away from mill levies and ad valorem tax associated with utilities. I think, you know, part of, you know, the comments we receive, and, and this is the same argument I have with that, uh, solid waste fee we have on our tax rolls, it's, it's, um, you know, you should pay if you use it. It's, it's just like, you know, your electric bill, generally, um, like City of Beulah, City of Hutch, they're, they're not using ad valorem taxes to subsidize, um, a utility fund. I understand we have a special taxing district that allows this to happen, but having the users pay full freight and not having, um, property owners, farmers that don't use these utilities pay for, um, the utility makes a lot of sense to me. And I think there's a perception, um, maybe it's more than perception, it's reality that, you know, taxes are, are high and, um, removing these and putting them where, where, you know, the users can pay for them makes a lot of sense. So I'm in favor of option three?
That's option two. We just called option two because the first one we needed, the original needed to have some edits anyways. So option one is as published but amended with a few changes. Option two is the, doesn't really change the actual budgets for many of the districts, but it takes away the mill levy for, um, all water and sewer districts that may have had mill levy. The, including the Highlands, but that, just for your, so you're aware, if there's no mill levy on the sewer districts, if someone doesn't make a payment, we can't shut them off, we can't shut their sewer off. Versus water, we could shut off water. So we're, each district, the funding is really dependent on people make, the citizens being able to make their payments. Payments will be going up. Two oh one and two oh two, separate from the bond that will pay for their infrastructure or their improvements, that's going to probably increase their rates. But sewer district two oh one's going to need an additional increase just by removing the mill levy this year. If it's removed for the budget for 2024, they're going to need another increase just to cover the current expenses.
How big an increase?
Um, let's see if. I don't, I really don't know at this point. The taxes do, do not bring a lot of money in. Let me see. See if I can find sewer district.
Taxes received off the mills versus what you're going to require.
Have to get down to the sewer districts. Based on the budget, so the user fees would have to raise to get five thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars. Right now, we're estimating they're bringing in thirty thousand dollars, so was it about a five percent increase?
You know, one of the other things, like, this looks awfully complicated, like, putting all of these, like, if we could get this off the administrative work, like. the administrative work, like, and just put it in a utility fund, so you don't have to run all of this stuff every year. I think that would simplify things too, wouldn't it?
I guess I'm not real sure.
Well, you're running this entire budget sheet for fifty-seven hundred dollars. And then it goes on everybody's tax form and they look at it and it's like, what is this? It's another tax and it's, we just, we get rid of all of that and it wouldn't be a tax anymore, it's just a fee for usage.
Yeah, and that's an option, I mean, that, that's probably even easier for us. But there are the, I mean, I just wanted to make sure you're aware that there could be increases in their rates. And we have less ability to, we don't really have ability, if they don't make payments, to shut them off.
But you could have the ability for a hookup fee to cover any, cover part of those expenses if they don't pay.
We can, yeah.
We want to have a fee, we'd probably have to assess or special-
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do send those to, if you don't pay your sewer bill, eventually we do send it to the clerk who puts it on your, and it becomes a tax lien, and that does happen, so, I mean, we do that. But the problem then is, and like, it's not, not to overshoot it, but when that happens, it still takes a long time to collect. So basically, with fees, you have a collection loss that you don't have, that you have less of with property taxes.
But it's not the non-users that are having to pay for that person not paying.
Oh, yeah, I was just answering the question about-
No, I'm just clarifying your answer.
And kind of as you were saying, there are probably property owners that are paying through the taxes that do not have a sewer connection. Utilities would be the example I could think of.
Some, some maybe still on septic and not on-
Well, probably a lot of ag, you know, just ag landowners.
Yeah, just not building.
I get that.
So that would remove it, but that's this option too, that's kind of in front of you. This shows the, for the 2024 budget, the ad valorem of each of those districts, doesn't show their mill levy, but it does remove it from two oh one, two oh two, and then Highlands bonded interest.
So what is the proper next step?
Next step is for the commission to have a discussion about the budgets and either adopt one of the options or if you wanted to change something, let staff know and we'll have to recess and come back with documents that you could sign and approve. But if you do not want a mill levy on any of the water or sewer districts, it's option two. That does have small increases in some of the fire districts. As mentioned earlier by the resident from fire district eight, they would have a small mill levy increase with current budget. To reduce the fire districts back to the R and R, that, really the change we would make isn't the operational cost, the transfer amount that we set aside to help build up their reserve to be able to pay for equipment, that would be reduced to whatever it takes to get the mill levy flat.
Regarding Highlands, I think we have the mayor of Highlands right here.
I'm thinking the same thing, if you want to comment.
Would you like to comment on this? Just thought I'd ask.
All right, I can start. So as most people know, I think that have followed me at all, I am not for most tax increases at all. However, these fire districts are mostly volunteer, with the exception, I believe, of number two. And keeping them in good equipment and with good working stuff to, you know, to be able to handle these situations, I think, is a priority. From what I understand, in the past, they have not always had up-to-date equipment and, you know, part of fighting the fire was also putting your suit out, you know, during the process in order to fight the fire. And I just think that, that getting to a point where they can afford the equipment and afford to upgrade it as they need to in order to keep the public safe, not only makes somebody more likely to volunteer, but also is the right thing to do. And so that's why I'll be voting to increase the mill levies on these fire districts. As far as the utilities, I'm in agreement with you, Daniel, that I think the people that are using it should be the ones that pay as opposed to just because you own the land, you know, if you're not using the utility, I think that you shouldn't pay. And so that's, those are kind of my comments.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bogner?
Well, the only thing I haven't noticed, the number there you came up with was five thousand dollars a year.
That was for that one sewer district, that's what the mill levy-
Would change, and what do we got out there, a hundred, a hundred users?
No. It's more like fifteen, which I went to one, it was sixty something.
So I'd double that, be about a hundred dollars a year difference on those individuals. But they would be paying for their own instead of being subsidized by the rest of the county. Just kind of running the numbers here through my head, so.
And part of the increase that the sewer districts already have received, I guess I may have muddied the waters a little bit earlier. I said it doesn't pay for any of the capital project. We did set it high enough to more than cover the operational cost. We said it, tried to set it to where it also covered the property tax, assuming those were going to be removed in the next year or two. Until we know the grants and the loans, the total dollar amount of that project, of that original six million dollar project, we won't know if it's going to take ten, fifteen, twenty percent increase in the rates or if their current rates will cover most of it. So I just kind of want to make that clear that we did increase the rates last year for this year to start building up some money for when that capital project was financed.
If we see that we have to reinstate that for some reason, it's doable.
On the mill levy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe we can, since it has been done.
Yeah, yeah.
Or do we just zero it out, leave it there and zero it out, but that doesn't get rid of the paperwork?
The budget would still be on here, it just would be, this budget would just show no taxes. And so we would, the clerk and treasurer would not be sending out a tax statement for, or an amount for that tax, for those districts, for their tax units, you know, each taxing unit will get a different set of mill levies depending on what districts they're in. But, yeah, so it would remove the people of Yoder and Hav and Highlands from getting a property tax bill for their sewer districts.
But in doing that, then you don't have to, if you should see a future need, you just change the mill levy.
Yes, it's still being the budget, you would just put it back in, yes.
Okay, well, I mean, this might help a few people on offsetting the fire district increases a little bit. So I'm going to go ahead and move this along in a motion to approve option two of the budget presentation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner White soul, any final discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes?
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner White soul?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes, motion passes five zero.
I had a comment, but you guys covered it all too good.
All right. Are we done with nine?
Yes.
Okay, monthly reports.
So monthly reports for this meeting are aging public transit, appraiser, automotive.
Sorry, it's for aging, appraiser, automotive clerk, community corrections, the DA, and emergency management. Anybody have any questions on anything that was in those monthly reports? Okay, other items I have, I was, for, just so you're aware, for the goat milking competition, we probably will send out a notice because there are going to be a majority of the commission there. It's not county business, but just so the public is aware, that three or more of you will be in the same location. And for those of you that are taking part, if you could be at the sheep, swine, and goat building at two forty-five on Friday, you could do the check-in. And I'll send Sandra there to, so you guys can get some nice pictures.
So we can be further humiliated.
Okay, I was, Sandra, I'm wondering if you could, when you put that press release out, put a little satire in there. Just kind of, you know, make it a fun notice of quorum, make something, use a little bit of artistic flair in it.
Because that is, that is the nature of the deal.
Serious business to be-
You can start working on your arm muscles.
We just hope it ain't utter destruction.
There you go.
Something like that, play on words, something, okay.
Patrick wanted to mention the tax sale.
I haven't talked much about this year, but we are going to have a tax sale on the property tax foreclosure. It will be on October twelfth at nine AM at the Hutchinson auditorium. Same time of year, same situation as we always do. Right now, we have taken in six hundred and five thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-one cents so far. Have seventy-seven parcels as of today, I anticipate some and not all of them going off before the twelfth. They have, owners have until October eleventh at three PM to redeem their property. Just want to mention that.
When was that, when was it?
October twelfth, starting nine AM at the auditorium, and we're there until everything sells.
Thank you, is that it? Okay, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Bogner?
Well, as I said, we, I attended the Quad County quarterly meeting. I've commented on a couple of things as they came up already in the meeting. Two things that I really haven't touched on that were kind of major things is the thirty by thirty. Sedgwick County's people thought that needed looking into pretty close with possibly even some. The group as a region, trying to do something regionally. Of course, you know the situation over there in Sedgwick County, that was one of the major cow towns back in the day. And I, I'm figuring that'll change a lot of things on the southern part of their territory and their city. So they're very interested in it. For those that don't know, when that kind of filled up over there and a lot of the properties got homesteaded, somewhere between Cheney Lake and the Reno County line, the Chisholm Trail did go up through to Ellsworth, as we mentioned before. So we do have a dog in this fight. But that came up, of course, the solar regulations have already been talked about. They held it at exploration point, exploration place. So, you know, things were kind of leaning to what you're proud of in your community and they've got a big expansion in, they're working on, to make it a destination place, which may help all our regional counties. And they asked us all to say something we were proud about in our county. And my comment was that I was really pl- two things, and like I said, it was drifting toward museums and that sort of thing. Most everyone was very proud of their staff and how they were doing their jobs properly. And, and we all felt that was an asset for the people. The other thing is, is on the museum side, I said, since everybody's touting what they have, Reno County has the Cosmosphere and one of, I think, seven mines, salt mines in the world where you can actually go down. Those are kind of worldwide type attractions. And so when the exploration point, place administrator got up to give his speech, he said an interesting comment, he was British and he was the head of a large aircraft museum over in Britain. And he said he was instructed or told that you need to get to Hutchinson, Kansas, in the business you're in, and look at the Cosmosphere. It's one of the best aviation type museums in the United States and probably the world. So we've got that here and I certainly hope in this, you know, the thought was, this whole region has a lot of that stuff. If we could build it a little bit regionally, that maybe we'd get a lot more participation in our local museums. With that, I think that pretty well covers, Randy was there, he might touch on some things I've missed, but.
You did a good job.
Thank you, Commissioner Bodner, Commissioner Parks?
I really don't have a lot of comments, I was supposed to make that meeting, but I couldn't get tore away from work in time to get there, so I wished I'd have made it, but maybe next time, so I really don't have comments much this time.
Commissioner Hearst?
Reading in an emails that, for those of you, when we talked about budgeting earlier with the conservation district, that five thirty Thursday, you can make it down to Sam Sanders's place, I might check your emails. If you go get one of those regarding that.
I've already RSVP'd.
So five thirty down there, I think the state conservation commission's going to be there. And I think this is a really good chance to update yourself on the happenings of the conservation areas.
Everyone, if I might interrupt, we might send out a public notice about that because I know I'm going as well, so that's at least three of us.
Yeah, I probably will because it's two blocks away. What does Sam have to do with that, I'm just curious?
He's on the conservation.
Oh, he is on both boards.
And the other thing is, I'm, I just question a couple of things and maybe you can help me out on this, but we have an official newspaper. And I look at Hutch News sometimes and I see things in there that I consider that should be official newspaper items. Then there, we paid for a lot of white areas on the tax sale, going out and not using official newspaper. I just want to make sure that we are utilizing, if we're going to have an official newspaper, let's use it.
So I guess, I use, the tax sale, because it's a legal notice, has a different set of rules. I was thinking about that actually today and whether or not that, and I think that next year I might utilize both. However, just so you know, the cost of the publication for the tax sale is borne by the people who redeem from the tax sale and from the auction, so the net budget effect to the county is zero from that. But I do think, because I've kind of preached consistency to the other department heads, I might publish in both next year just for that reason, so.
Well, I just saw the sheriff had a sale, a mortgage that was put in the hutch paper, which I was just curious about some of the things, what can be used, I know it's pretty open, but I think we should be able to use our official newspaper as much as possible, that's what we have it for.
I was reading the same thing last night, that thought occurred to me.
If it's a sheriff, I don't know exactly what you're saying, if it's a foreclosure that would, it's comes, it's headed from the sheriff, however, the attorneys who are working for the foreclosing parties request the court, and usually they have a court order telling them which paper to use, and usually they, so that's kind of what dictates some of that. Even though those sheriff sales are published as sheriff sales, and the civil process department-
Even though those sheriff sales are published as sheriff sales, and the Civil Process Department's involved, but the attorneys for the foreclosing party kind of is leading that charge.
I know, I've seen him in the record as well as in the, in the N.
There's, yeah, there's options, it's just not necessarily, it's not necessarily the county. I wouldn't say the sheriff is choosing which paper to use in that situation, is what I'm trying to spit out.
Commissioner White soul, are we done? Commissioner Hurst? Okay, Commissioner White soul?
All right, so I've got a couple of items. Of course, Reno County is proud to host the state fair again. It's been going on now, it'll be going on through the weekend. And so encourage everybody to come to Reno County, spend your money here. Go to the fair and enjoy yourself, and you might even get to see a commissioner milk a goat. So, so there was, I was reading in the paper, there was some enforcement action where, you know, the state sends dollars to local police, and they work overtime, and, and basically stop people. This one was a DUI push. And I was very glad to see that our own local sheriff, of the 64 people that they stopped, 60 were given warnings. So this was not a situation where the sheriff's office was trying to find people, but more correct behaviors that are correctable. And so I really appreciate the sheriff doing that, and I wanted to say publicly thank you to him. So the church I go to, Grace Bible Church, is having a fall fest this evening. So, you know, if maybe money's a little tight, but you want to get, get the kids some cotton candy and some shaved ice, and maybe let them go on a bouncy house, or, you know, play some games, things like that. We will be doing that tonight, starting at 6 o'clock. I will be donating cotton candy and shaved ice. It's really good stuff, so the public is welcomed. And, you know, we wanted to make that announcement as well. And then, you know, that's really all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White soul. I just have two things. I think most of it, most of the other things were already covered. Randy and I were present at the state fair board meeting yesterday. They invited, I think they do that every year. They invite the chair to the meeting. Good group of board members. They have a huge job during the fair, and they have, it's pretty interesting. They have kind of a weekly or daily situation report. And they go through everything from events to, you know, security, the state troopers report. They have a lot of new stuff that they've done recently. They have a new camera system, a new audio system that they can communicate across the fairgrounds for emergencies, which is pretty neat. But really a friendly group, and they were very appreciative of Reno County. And we, we expressed the same to them for, for all their work, so. The only other thing, since museums were brought up, our clerk, Donna, asked me to just welcome the South Central clerks to an event they had at Stratica. So she, she invited that group. They're a pretty, I think they're a pretty close group. They, they communicate a lot, and work together a lot, and share ideas. And so I, I had the pleasure of welcoming them to Reno County. And I, I told them the 650-foot drop takes about three seconds. And, and I was the one that got to pull the lever on the way down. And some of them took me pretty seriously. But, no, I, I didn't go down with them. I've been there many times, but it was impressive to see the operation again up top. The volunteers and the docents are very, you know, they clearly love what they do. And safety's a big thing out there, and saw that, and got to see the, the commercial operations and how they work together with, with museums. So it's, it's a good operation. A great thing for the county, as Commissioner Bogner pointed out. So with that, we have at least one executive session. I'm going to suggest we have about a five-minute break. We'll go ahead and leave the video in operation because I want to talk to staff real quickly on the executive sessions. And, and we'll make that announcement public here in about five minutes. So we'll meet back about 20 after or so. Okay, welcome back. At this time, I'm, I'll make a motion for the board to recess into executive session until noon. At that time, we expect the meeting to end. And that will be with the county administrator and county counselor joining the governing body in executive session. The justification for the executive session is a private discussion of job performance of non-elected personnel. And the subject matter is the job performance of several non-elected personnel. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Parks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you.